North Borough, South Borough Regional School Committee. Open meeting to work. It is Wednesday, February twenty eighth, twenty twenty four. The time is six thirty two P M. We have at present two remote participants. Joan Frank and Karen Ayers. As a result during the course of the meeting, as we have any cause to vote, we will do a roll call vote.
I believe Kathy Key just arrived. Keith.
Yep, she is now, she is now on.
So as the chair of the meeting, I also got Kathy Key being a remote participant to the meeting. First item of the agenda this evening is audience sharing. Not seeing any audience sharing. We'll move on to the next item of the agenda is to take action on the open meeting minutes of the January twenty fourth, twenty fourth meeting. Do I have a motion to approve these minutes?
So move.
Second.
Moved by Paul Desmond, seconded by Chris Covino. All in favor, starting with the remote participants. Joan Frank.
Yes.
Kathy Key.
Yes.
Karen Ayers.
Yes.
Moving left to right, Kathleen.
Yes.
John.
Approved.
Sean.
I'll abstain since I wasn't here.
Chris.
Yes.
Paul Desmond.
Yes.
All in favor with one abstention. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, update on educational policy. Principal revenue provide an update on the DECA approval of the DECA overnight trip, please.
Sure, yes, thank you. So we have a, a application for an overnight trip to Los Angeles for our students to compete in the DECA International Career Development Conference. So this is the next and last stage of the, the series of DECA competitions that our students participate in. So we have, I think we have twenty eight students approximately. I don't know if that number's been exactly finalized just yet, but based on who, who scored highest in the last round of DECA competitions. This would be from April twenty sixth through April thirtieth and would be accompanied by four adults. So this is, like we recall, last year our students went to Orlando. The, the location changes year to year, but this is an exciting trip and our students usually come back with some hardware, which is pretty exciting.
Do I hear any discussion from the committee members or any questions relating to the trip? Not hearing, hearing any, do I have a, a motion to approve the trip?
I approve. Make a motion to approve.
Moved by Kathleen and do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Paul Desmond. Roll call vote beginning with the remote participants. Joan Frank.
Yes.
Kathy Key.
Yes.
Karen Ayers.
Yes.
Kathleen.
Yes.
John.
Yeah.
Sean.
Yes.
Chris.
Yes.
Yes.
All is a yes, that is unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay, good luck.
Good luck to the participants.
I'll let you know how, how they do.
All right, moving along to legislative update from Greg.
So I have included in your packet three legislative updates, continued advocacy. These are not different from prior years. They center on the Student Opportunity Act and minimum aid. The North Borough, South Borough Regional School District is a minimum aid district, meaning it far exceeds its minimum local contribution. So its minimum local aid would be thirty dollars. And we're asking it to be increased to the maximum amount. I think believe last year Becky was increased to sixty dollars.
Yes.
So we continue to advocate for increased funding. The second area of act advocacy is special education circuit breaker. So circuit breaker offsets expenses for students who attend out of district placements. And we are requesting that the state fully fund the circuit breaker program in F Y twenty five. As well as fully fund transportation expenses, which is now reimbursable under circuit breaker. And then lastly, student transportation reimbursement. So as a regional district, we receive regional transportation reimbursement and has not been funded to the level that it was supposed to for decades. And again advocating for it to be fully funded. And that the state keep its commitment to support regional transportation. So those are the three areas that we, we continue to advocate with our legislative delegation.
Any questions or feedback from the committee?
Yeah, what does advocate mean exactly? Like what are we doing?
So we are meeting with our legislative delegation on March eleventh to review these priorities. I've submitted these priorities to our legislative delegation in North Borough and South Borough. And most recently, I had a conversation with the town administrator in South Borough. And he is meeting with legislators and also has these priorities. So continuing just to, to ask for them to support these, these areas.
That sounds great. I mean, if you need any support from us, or me in particular, I believe I am the legislative liaison, so.
So I will find out, so March eleventh, the, the North Borough, North Borough Select Board is meeting with the North Borough delegation. I'm not able to attend, I have a conflict. But I think that, you know, any, any member can attend that meeting. I'll, I'll send out the invite. And then I will follow up with South Borough when they plan on inviting the legislators to a slot board meeting.
Okay.
And make sure we have a presence as well.
Sounds good.
All right, so moving along to the, the signature item for the meeting. The, the review of the fiscal year twenty five recommended budget and assessments. These will be items for discussion and approval this evening. Before passing along to, to Greg, I guess I would, as a member of the budget subcommittee, I'll provide some overarching remarks and then open it up to other members of the subcommittee to see if they want to provide any feedback. We met, as a budget subcommittee met on February fifteenth to review the updated draft budget and resulting assessments to the towns of North Borough and South Borough. Overall, the subcommittee was supportive of the proposed budget assessments and planned application of excess and deficiency funds, as well as the establishment of capitalization stabilization, or capital stabilization fund. As I thought about, if anything, most of the dialogue that we had during that meeting was actually directed towards challenging the team to add more where appropriate. Just as an example, not deferring the addition of proposed positions that the team has concluded would be additive or would enhance the overall student experience. From my observation, I was impressed most by the conversation. When I think about what Greg and his team were trying to do is balance the, you know, be mindful to the increases to the, the town assessments, but then also trying to make sure that positioning the school district to, to deliver on the overall strategic plan. So I think their, their approach is appropriate. So overall, I'm supportive of the budget. I guess I would open it up to other committee members that were there to, to provide any feedback that they want.
I was, I was not in attendance at that meeting.
You were not in attendance at that meeting. Paul?
Yeah, I was there. I had to leave a little early, I think. Yeah, I, I recall the discussion about some of these positions that have been on the list for, you know, a number of years. I think you pointed out assistant coaches was one that I know has been on there for quite a while. So I don't know how that came out. I guess you've got a plan for sort of adding these over time, or can we talk about that a little bit?
Sure. So I think from the operational budget subcommittee, the conversation around having a more strategic plan of adding positions over time. Really thinking about the positions that the school committee is interested in adding and having a, a four to five plan and, and holding true to that plan. Versus just rolling up unfunded positions year over year. One of the areas that we did have a conversation is adding some coaches that have been on the requests for probably eight or nine years. And it's a small dollar amount. And we also talked about what, which positions will have the greatest impact on connecting students to adults. And I think it was the committee members in attendance opinion that that would have a strong impact on the overall experience that students have in athletics. And as a result, Becky and I went back to the budget and identified funding for adding those positions. So it is included in the F Y twenty five recommended budget. So that's where that stands. There are still other positions that are not funded in this budget that were requested. And the next level of work is really working with a leadership team on coming up with that plan, that multi-year plan and prioritizing those positions from positions that will have the greatest impact to, to an impact, but, you know, might be four or five years out.
And Kathy, you're welcome to speak up at any time, but I don't know if you wanted to provide any leading comments prior to, to going through the, the budget presentation.
So, so I was one of the participants that did not want to go forward with the assistant coaches right now, only because we just had the conversation of February, autumn, or January about cutting the athletic fees. And I just feel like, and I know it's a small dollar amount, but I don't want this small dollar amount to come back and bite us in, you know, in the rear end later on when we start cutting fees for athletics. Cause I don't know where the money's going to come from, you know, over that. However, if we do it two, three years, however we do it, I just want to make sure that the money's there year after year. And the other thing is, like, if you look at the teams that the coaches, that they want coaches for, I mean, and I don't, I'm not, not against having assistant coaches, but all those teams have actually made mistakes with exactly what they have. So, you know, I'm just, I'm not a hundred percent in favor of it, but if everyone else wants it, that's fine. I just think that if we start cutting the athletic fees in the coming years, you just have to start thinking about that part.
So with that background and there'll be further discussion to the budget. So I just wanted to, to, to level set there and then now open it to Greg to, to go through the budget presentation.
Sure. So February twenty eighth, please present the recommended budget to the school committee. That's been a tremendous amount of work by a lot of people. Sean and the leadership team at the high school, faculty and staff, the finance department, the district leadership team. And I feel that the budget we are presenting this evening is educationally sound, fiscally responsible. And I won't go through a, a lot of the slides in detail. These slides have been presented over the past two meetings in the preliminary budget, the revised preliminary budget. But I think it is important to, to speak to the fact that our work really centers around our vision and our mission. It's student centered. It's not about, it's about how we can improve the student experience and prepare them for the next grade level college or career, life after Algonquin. The budget process is just that. So it begins early in August and continues through approval at town meeting. So again, it's a tremendous amount of work from our finance department, a lot of detailed work, a lot of meetings. And, you know, here we are almost at March first. And after this evening with the approval of the recommended budget, the next two milestones are the two town meetings. One in South Borough, which is on Saturday, March twenty third, and one in North Borough, which is the Monday after April break, and I don't have the date. April twenty second? Oh, it's right there. Thank you, Becky. So again, the process is in a good place. We continue to have conversations with boards and committees in both communities. In South Borough, those conversations have taken place at this point in time. And in North Borough, last night we presented to the financial advisory and we have one more presentation on March fourteenth with another committee in North Borough. In terms of priorities, and again, what we're trying to accomplish with the, with the budget. The school committee, as you well know, sets priorities and these are really important as we decide and prioritize how we'll expend the funds that we have and what we, we hope to accomplish. And I will, will not read these in details, but again, these are a real important component of the process. Fiscal year twenty twenty five budget impacts. So supplies and material costs, we, we still are being impacted by inflation in certain areas. It has moderated, so we are seeing it not have the same impact that we saw last year. But in certain areas, it still is impacting the overall budget. Special education, out of district tuition continues to be volatile from year to year. We see peaks and valleys in out of district expenses, which makes it difficult to budget from a year to year perspective. Because you'll look at one year and then compare to the next year, it looks like it's gone up five hundred percent, which it has. So one of the areas that we're looking at is how do we moderate special education out of district tuition costs over time? So it's more predictable and we don't have these peaks and valleys. Special education transportation is also an area where we've seen a significant increase. The special education sector has been, or transportation sector has been challenging. And we're seeing significant increases in costs. And as a result, it will impact the overall F Y twenty five budget. Insurance costs, because the region is its own entity, it, it is responsible for insurance costs. We are seeing increases, you know, approximately ten to twelve percent. And we still are negotiating health insurance rates with our health insurance provider at this time. And lastly, S R, the phase out. So we did receive funds to mitigate some of the impacts of COVID nineteen pandemic. We are required to expend our S R funds by the end of fiscal year twenty four. So this June, we're required to expand S R three. And we've done the best we can to try not to create structural deficits by hiring additional positions. But there are areas where we have to put funding back on the budget where we offset it from S R funds. That is an impact to the overall budget. These are the expenses that we use for S R three. A tutor position and translations and student staff devices. So the tutor position translations and student staff devices are now back on the operational budget. In terms of the budget process, so this is just a table outlining where we started from, from the initial budget request to where we are this evening. You'll notice that from the revised preliminary budget to the superintendent's recommended budget, the budget amount has not changed. It remains at twenty seven million eight hundred seventy one thousand four hundred twenty six dollars, which represents a four point eight two percent increase. Again, in the budget, there were a number of proposed positions. In this table, the rows that are highlighted in green are the positions that were added to F Y twenty five budget. Those in gray did not, are not included in, in the recommended budget this evening. So the point two F T adaptive physical education teacher, that is a shared position across North Borough, South Borough in the region. It's a point two increase over the, the three districts and the region's portion is point zero six. Educational support professional, looking at our student population for next year and their needs. We added a E S P. We've also added a speech and language pathologist based on I E P requirements. And then new from, new from, that's new from, and was not included in the last presentation, are the varsity assistant coaches. For girls volleyball, field hockey, girls tennis, boys volleyball and boys tennis. And I will point out too, that this does provide more parity in assistant coaches across boys and girls sports.
Greg.
Yes.
For the speech and language pathologist, is that a shared position amongst all, all the schools as well, or is that specific to?
That's just specific to Algonquin.
So is that increasing an existing position by point two?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. So it's a point two increase to an existing position.
Is that individual going to be full time at this point, do we know?
They're a point eight currently, they'll be a one point oh.
Could we just go back? I, I just, the other thing I'd point out and then address more questions or have commentary on it. But just on the, the point about the varsity assistant coaches and the discussion that took place from my perspective with the subcommittee meeting and, you know, clearly Kathy had made a comment about maybe a dissent around it. The way it was positioned back to the team, and I also would look to like the team chairperson for the special education, like the challenge to say, if these roles are here, we should be adding them. And, and advocating for providing the school with the resources they need to meet the needs of the, you know, the students in the community. And what came out from the discussion of the team chairperson, you know, it's, it's the, you know, it's a full role. It's, it's the, you know, highest compensated role on this schedule. And it was from a, pushing it back to the administration, it wasn't fully vetted yet, that it truly was in need and understanding, you know, the benefit of it provided. It's been proposed, but it hasn't got to a point where the, the team thinks we need it. And so we said, well, what we'd like you to do is go back and look at these roles, which ones are added? Which ones do we feel that the team feels that make a difference and we want to add? And they came back with the assistant coaches. Part of it was the dialogue that we had, but it just wanted to be clear, it wasn't as if we sat there and said, we want the assistant coaches added. It was more just, we want to support you to provide the right level of support and resources to the school and the community. Thanks.
Sorry, Stephanie and Sean, I participated in the hiring of the actual lead directing multilingual person. And I thought during that conversation, we had agreed that an assistant was in fact needed. But what I hear sort of from Matt is it was decided it was not, or it wasn't vetted. So can you take me through why we're not going ahead with the director of multilingual assistant?
At the time of the hiring of the director of multilingual learners and equity, it was our hope that we would be able to add an assistant director.
Yes.
But not a decision because we had not gone through the budget process. In the case of that role, I would not say that it's the same as what Matt was just talking about, about not being vetted. I think it was just a prioritization exercise of, because that is across all three districts. So that would have to be approved in all three budgets.
Understood.
And it was not something that in the prioritization process, we made it through all three budgets. Is the way I would.
Yeah, and I would.
That's just, it's inconsistent, so I guess.
No, I, the, so the conversation around the assistant director of multilingual learners is that we're, we've hired a new director of multilingual learners to begin July one. She is new to the role. To then have her add an assistant director when she's still learning the role did not make sense to us. So the thinking was living, living in the role for a year, getting a sense of what the job is. Gaining her perspective and then adding this position in the F Y twenty six budget is kind of the plan that we have. The, the thinking around these, you know, this is the next level of work that, you know, we discussed as a team is that there was a general consensus that these are positions we want to add, where there wasn't full consensus as win. And those are the conversations we need to then have as a leadership team and then come up with that plan, that four-year plan moving forward.
Appreciate it.
Is there a way just, sorry, going forward, you know, the caller or something to, to note? Something in all three towns? You know what I mean?
Yes.
I mean, it, it's kind of implied, but then, I was not sure. Yeah.
Well, but it sounds as you develop your plan, you're going to have a, probably a, just an improved protocol around the entire sort of vision as it relates to what you're looking at a three to five year plan on hiring.
Exactly.
I think all of this may change. This probably has been consistent for many years, but you'll probably be able to upgrade the whole process.
Yeah, I mean, there could be a position that is not on here that, that surfaces as a priority. And those are the internal conversations. I mean, I, that is true. And I think like our capital plan where we have a multi-year plan, we're taking the same approach for positions and staffing. So, so great conversation, great questions. In terms of our budget offsets, so each year we look at how do we offset our overall operational budget? And we have three areas. It's F Y twenty four circuit breaker tuition reimbursement, F Y twenty four circuit breaker transportation reimbursement. And then we also are going to apply F Y twenty five circuit breaker tuition reimbursement. That number is as a result of the governor's supplemental budget bill that is offsetting the fourteen percent increase on out of district placements that we experienced in F Y twenty four. We will not see this money until our F Y twenty five circuit breaker reimbursement.
We may see it this spring, but we can, it will be used in F Y twenty five.
So those are the offsets that we, we are projecting in the F Y twenty five budget. This again is the significant budget increases. And this table just shows the process that we took from preliminary, revised preliminary to recommended. And the total and the line items that we were looking at more closely. As we begin the preliminary budget, typically the, the numbers are forecasts. And as we move through revised preliminary into recommended, we get more information from the state, from our vendors. And we're able to have more accurate numbers as we move through the process. Significant budget reductions. So again, this takes us from the preliminary revised preliminary to recommended. And what are the recommended, or what are the budget reductions? So you'll see that, you know, staff reductions due to enrollment, so through attrition. Special education adjustments, so looking at students who are aging out of programs, who might be returning or in out of district programs. Transportation, getting a better sense of our transportation costs. And then insurance and retirement system, really Becky and the team forecasting insurance and retirements. So as a, as a result, the total budget reductions is a little under two million dollars.
Can I, can I ask you a question then now?
Sure.
It's, it's clear to me with what I struggled with when we were in the, the subcommittee meeting. If we just go back one slide. So in this presentation for budget increases.
Yep.
Preliminary, revised, recommended, they are at the top line, we're going to see an increase in infrastructure of fifty thousand. And then revised, it was still fifty thousand. And now in the recommended, we're only going to see an increase of twenty eight thousand.
Correct.
So the total increase is four forty four.
Correct.
So it's like full increase in each column.
Correct.
If we move to the next page.
This is.
The, the method that was presented is actually in aggregate, I think it's not. Circuit breaker was going to go down six sixty one and it didn't change in the revised and it didn't change in the recommended. It's actually six sixty one because the bottom right is the sum total of all those.
Correct. So it's e, it's layering on in the slide from preliminary, revised, preliminary. So in future. In future.
I was wondering.
You know.
I struggled with it. Like I created like a ten minute conversation in the subcommittee meeting already.
No, but that's important and we can, we can have, you know, parallel structure, so it's, it's the same from one to the next.
Okay, well, thank you.
So the fiscal year twenty twenty five recommended budget is twenty seven million eight hundred seventy one thousand four hundred twenty six dollars. Which is a one million two hundred eighty one thousand eighty dollar increase over fiscal year twenty four, which is a four point eight two percent increase. Again, looking at the recommended budget compared to inflation. I think the regional school committee has brought in modest budget increases over the past five years. And if you look at in F Y twenty And if you look at in FY twenty one, FY twenty two, and FY twenty three compared to inflation, I think again, the dollar value was not as powerful in FY twenty two and FY twenty three. And the impact of bringing forth a one point five percent budget compounds over time. So you're not building upon a budget, a typical budget, which probably would have been in the four to five percent increase and building on that from year over year. So it does have an impact. And I think part of what we're seeing is we will have a few correction years to get back to, to the percent increases that we would expect. In terms of the recommended budget apportionment, so again, just briefly, this is the required way we apportion the budget. There's a statutory method, and then when we get to FY twenty five budget after required contributions, then we have our regional agreement. So we have the total budget. Chapter seventy aid is the governor's number right now. So this is typically the floor of state aid that we've received. So we could see an increase in state aid, which would lower our overall assessments potentially. Regional transportation aid is projected at a little under eight hundred thousand dollars. Again, this is a number that can fluctuate as the state budget moves through the process. And then revenues, so you take that sum and subtract it from our total budget, and you get FY twenty five budget after offsets. You then take a number that is calculated by the state for each community, which is called the minimum local contribution. That is the minimum amount that each community is required by law to invest in education in its community. So Northborough's minimum local contribution is a little over eight million, and Southborough's is a little over five million. And then what's left, if you subtract the minimum local contributions from FY twenty five budget after offsets is what is above and, and beyond minimum local contribution. That is then apportioned by the regional agreement. And the regional agreement states that it is based on October one enrollments. So Northborough's portion was sixty one point five four percent. Southborough's portion was thirty eight point four six percent. So you see of the ten, a little over ten million, Northborough's portion, Southborough's portion. You add each community's minimum local contribution. And then you have the total amount that each community is responsible for paying. So looking at the difference between FY twenty four to FY twenty five, you see an increase in Northborough of a little over one point one million, and then Southborough a little over six hundred thousand. The percent increase for Northborough would be eight point three percent, and Southborough would be seven point two two percent. The school committee, you know, our recommendation for the recommended budget is to use six hundred and seventy five thousand dollars of excess and deficiency. Using this amount would still place the school committee in alignment with its policy, its E and D policy. So of the six hundred and seventy five thousand four hundred and fifteen, three hundred and ninety five dollars would be apportioned to Northborough. And Southborough would be two hundred and fifty nine thousand six hundred and five dollars. And that would reduce each community's assessment almost by three percent. So Northborough's percent increase would be five point two one, and Southborough's would be four point one seven percent. So again, I think these are reasonable assessments. We don't have any control of, of enrollment. I think the only mechanism the school committee has to impact the assessments is really using E and D. That has been the past practice, and it has helped to kind of moderate increases from communities. This is the first, actually the past couple of years, that percent increase has been balanced. But there have been years where Northborough's seen a ten percent increase and Southborough's seen a negative impact. And conversely, there's been years where Southborough's seen an eight percent increase and Northborough's seen a zero percent. So our prediction is that over the next several years, we'll see trends where there is more parity in assessments, which is hopeful in terms of the overall budget process. And lastly, a new approach in terms of capital. So part of the, of the recommended FY twenty five budget is adding non-exempt capital assessments. In prior experiences, we've put warrant articles forward for capital projects. And we would rely on each community approving those warrant articles. If one community didn't approve the warrant article, it was, it did not move forward. So this strategy is really looking at assessing each community as non-exempt and having it be part of the overall operational budget and consistently investing about four hundred thousand dollars over the next five years to accomplish a lot of what is outlined in the capital plan. So added to the percent increase to Northborough and Southborough is one point five nine, one point five nine percent in Northborough and one point five six percent in Southborough.
Can I ask a question there?
Sure.
So in terms of town meeting, this capital assessment part will be all rolled in the operation?
Correct. When they, when they approve the overall recommended budget, approval of, of the overall recommended budget approves this as well.
Just, um, the slide you just showed, the, the one point five-ish increases, is that included in the five point two and the four point one?
It is not.
In addition to.
In addition to. And we've had communications with both select boards and town administrators around the strategy. And so they're aware of it. We've provided them with draft presentations and information. And I think for the most part, I think it's supported.
Can I just clarify something on the one point five, if you go to that slide actually? So actually, the Northborough's portion, the two forty two, is one point five nine percent of their total assessment of the fifteen million that they'll be assessed. And that assessment number, the fifteen million includes their debt assessment as well for both the renovation project and for the athletic complex. So of their total assessment, that capital assessment is only one point five percent of their overall assessment.
So the overall assessment includes other non-exempt?
Correct. That, that fifteen million does, yes. On the previous slide, it does not.
And then this is Becky, what you were speaking to?
Yes.
Do you want to speak, walk through this?
Sure. So these are some numbers that were provided to the town. It just outlines the, both communities' debt assessment and how it is broken down. The renovation addition project is, is an exempt project from proposition two and a half, where the athletic complex is not. So it is broken down into those two components. And you can see that for overall, for the debt payments, it's just over one point three million. And it's broken down further in Northborough, eight hundred and thirty one thousand eight hundred and ninety one dollars. And then Southborough's five oh four zero nine four. And that percentage that you see at the top is different because when it comes to debt and capital assessments, we're actually looking at an average of the past four years of October first enrollments. So that is a different percentage compared to the operational budget.
So Becky, so this number, this fifteen million one hundred and eighty one thousand three hundred and seventy three dollars is the fourteen million for Northborough, adding the eight thirty one, its portion. The same for Southborough. And we typically have not shown this to the regional committee. This is kind of the next, the next level. And then in terms of the four hundred thousand dollars or the three hundred and ninety thousand dollars, these are the areas that have been identified for improvements. And I will stop there and see if there are any questions before we move on to the warrant article.
So Becky, I have one, if I, if I could, it's just, I'm just preparing for the, for the article, well, preparing for the vote. Because I think the, the need to potentially approve the budget and the assessments. And I think the, the assessment needs to be the total assessment that we're going to have, which would be the budget plus the capital plus the debt.
I think the way we usually voted is as presented by the superintendent versus having a vote where it has the specific numbers. But if the committee, I can certainly provide those numbers if the committee wishes to outline.
Well, yeah, so in, probably because in the, in the, in the draft, I think I, I saw totals. My question, I guess, is, and maybe it relates to the as presented, I'm sorry to do this to you real time. Southborough, I added the eight point eight million dollar assessment plus the debt plus the capital, and I got to the number that's presented. Northborough, if I add the fiscal year twenty five assessment of fourteen million one one nine eight seventy nine, plus the capital assessment of two forty two oh seventy seven, plus the debt assessment of eight thirty one eight ninety one, I'm arriving at fifteen million one ninety three eight forty seven, which is different than what's presented.
What number did, what number you, were you using for Northborough? Sorry.
So Northborough fiscal year twenty five assessment, fourteen million one one nine eight seventy nine.
Which is the non-exempt assessment calculation.
One one nine eight seventy nine, yes.
Plus the capital, two forty two oh seventy seven, plus the debt payments of eight thirty one eight ninety one. Arrives in my map of fifteen million one ninety three eight forty seven.
I do have that on my assessment that's been shared with the town. I have that number, the fifteen million one ninety three eight forty seven, so it just may be the slide that.
So the slide says fifteen one eighty one.
So what is the number Becky? So we can just?
It is fifteen million one ninety three eight forty seven.
Okay, that's what the motion.
That's Northborough's.
And Southborough's was accurate.
I, by my map.
Nine five one five eight nine seven.
So just so you're, so we're clear Becky, so I gave example motions.
Okay.
So, just making sure we have the right number.
Well, in the example, so probably, in the example motion, it, Southborough needs to be the nine million five fifteen, which is presented. And I did that, and it adds up. So I can, so now, and I can read a proposed motion button. I just want to pause to see if there's any questions and commentary in front of me.
Sorry.
So it, it occurs to me as, as we're looking at this, and I don't want to gum this up too much, but I have a question for you. So I really liked, I, I don't know that I necessarily recall seeing the inflation slide, which kind of gives a perspective as to how we've done sort of over the last five years. And, and I suspect there's a reason that we've never actually used cost per student. Is that a metric that we just simply don't like? Because it seems obvious to me that we'd want to say, this is what it costs per student, so like if you divide the number of students. Because how do we metric ourselves against our other schools if this is a good budget or a bad budget?
Yeah, I mean, I think we do look at per pupil expenditure.
Right. I, but I, we don't necessarily put that, in other words, if you're questioning, is twenty eight million dollars? Or Matt will give me the exact number, I'm sure. But, but like, what's good? Like, is that a, is that a good number or not? I just, I'm, I'm curious. I, we all feel happy about it, but I guess giving me some comparisons might be helpful. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not going to not vote today, but I just wonder whether or not we could think about how we could maybe say, yeah, you know what, we're, we're top, top twenty five, or like, there's got to be some way we can compare ourselves.
Yeah, I think.
And I think you, we all know it, but I don't think we say it, and I think we probably should celebrate that a bit more on our slides.
And I will share that one of your predecessors, Paul Butka, always talked about, you know, as we look at decreased enrollment at Algonquin Regional High School, to expect the question, you know, if you are decreasing your enrollment by X number of students, by fifteen students, then you should reduce your budget that times per pupil expenditure.
May, maybe, but I mean, there's lots of reasons why you may not.
Exactly. And I think that the calculation too is, you know, isn't, it's important to note that when, when ten students unenroll or, or, you know, we lose, decreases by ten, ten students, that the overall capital expense of running classes and courses doesn't necessarily, it's not a one-to-one relationship. But I think adding that, an analysis on that, we can do.
Yeah, and I'm not going the way my predecessor Paul said. I'm, I'm simply pointing out that I think there could be more obvious ways that we could make this. I don't think, to your point, I don't think anyone's going to necessarily complain about it, but you'll probably give a bit more metrics on that. Thanks.
Any other commentary or questions?
Matt, I have a question. The, can we go back one slide, Greg? So I'm looking in the sample motion that was provided in the memo. Those numbers.
So that's what we just worked on right now.
Okay.
Do you want to read those everyone else?
Can I add a dollar to Southborough just for rounding purposes, just to make sure we have it?
No way.
Eight nine eight. Sorry.
And then, let's see. She did, yeah, I was. Did you want to ask a question?
Yes. So for the capital stabilization budget, is that reflected in this budget at all? That was something that was talked about for the future, correct? The capital station.
Correct.
So is that expected to be in the warrant?
So that's, that is our next, once we get through this budget, then we'll talk about the, the warrant article.
Is there any questions on the, on the phone?
Negative.
There was, but I figured I'd open it. If I don't hear.
Can I also add one other, one, operational budget subcommittee conversation was doing more workshops around kind of the calculation for regional school systems, apportionment, the regional agreement, the statutory way we distribute money. So providing more workshops for those who might be interested in really kind of diving in deeply to, to understand it. I think that is something that we will, we will offer in the next few months for those who kind of want to learn more.
Thank you. So if there isn't any other discussion, I would like to request a motion to first approve the fiscal year twenty twenty five Northborough, Southborough Regional School District Superintendent's recommended budget in the amount of twenty seven million eight hundred and seventy one thousand dollars, four, eight hundred and seventy one thousand four hundred and twenty six dollars, which is a one million two hundred and eighty one thousand eighty dollar increase over the fiscal year twenty twenty four appropriated budget and represents a four point eight two percent increase.
So moved.
Second by Chris, second by John. Roll call vote beginning with remote. Any, do I have to open a discussion before we go to vote?
You couldn't.
Any further discussion on that? Hearing none. First calling on remote participants, Joan Frank.
Yes.
Kathy Key.
Yes.
Karen Ayers.
Yes.
And Kathleen Holland is not present for the vote. John?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
That is unanimous, and I also approve, which I haven't done in the previous ones, but that is unanimous for the members being present. Second, I'd like to take a, I would like to accept a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty five Northborough and Southborough Regional School District Superintendent recommended assessments in the amount of Northborough's. North Borough's fiscal year twenty five assessment, fifteen million, one hundred and ninety three thousand, eight hundred, forty seven dollars. And the South Borough fiscal year twenty five assessment, nine million, five hundred and fifteen thousand, eight hundred and ninety eight dollars. The assessments include the application of six hundred and seventy five thousand dollars in excess and deficiency monies, of which North Borough's portion, four hundred, four, four hundred and fifteen thousand, nine hundred and thirty, three hundred and ninety five dollars. Excuse me, let me, let me repeat that. North Borough's portion of the excess and deficiency is four hundred and fifteen thousand, three hundred and ninety five dollars. And South Borough's portion of the excess and deficiency is two hundred and fifty nine thousand, six hundred and five dollars. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Paul, seconded by John. Roll call vote beginning with, uh, remote participants Joan Frank.
Yes.
Kathy Key.
Yes.
Karen Ayers. Karen Ayers.
Yes.
I heard a yes. Um, Kathleen Holland is still not present, John?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
And I approve also, that is unanimous for the members present.
Thank you.
That, that would move us to the next item on the agenda to discuss the, um, warrant article.
Sure, so I will actually turn it over to Becky to talk about the, uh, proposed warrant article.
Uh, so we have submitted this warrant article to, um, the town of South Borough, um, for inclusion on, um, the town meeting warrant. Uh, is, we've communicated previously, it had been approved by the town of North Borough in a prior, um, town meeting. So this stabilization fund is one that we would be able to set up. Um, we would then through our annual budget process be able to allocate funds to be, um, put into the stabilization fund that could be utilized for capital projects, um, and things that we have identified in our capital plan. We, a few years ago, when we, uh, originally had this conversation about the capital stabilization fund, the school committee did establish, um, a policy, and that is D one sixty, um, which outlines the procedure, um, for the capital stabilization fund. Um, and it really just outlines the law as well. So when we are funding that capital stabilization fund, it does require a two-third vote of the North Borough, South Borough Regional School Committee, um, through the annual budget process. We can also do it, um, as a budget amendment, um, in a, in, later in the fiscal year. If we were to do that though, we would have to send notice to both, um, communities, um, select boards, and they would have forty five days to call a special town meeting to vote on that amendment. And similar to the issuance of debt, if they choose not to hold that meeting, then that would mean that those towns would approve of the amendment. The use of the, um, funds, again, we would be utilizing those through our capital planning process, um, that we do every fall, um, in coordination with, um, Mike Gorman, and then we would also have those conversations, um, with both communities through their capital, um, improvement planning. And so we would want to also, um, make sure that we have a target reserve level for this fund, and the policy does outline that we would be in a targeted range of one percent to two and a half percent of the district's annual operating budget. Uh, and some of the items that could be, um, funded through this capital stabilization fund, usually the definition of a capital project is something with a value of twenty five thousand dollars or more, and also a multi-year useful life, um, or anything that the district could take debt out for. Um, and so some of those categories might be capital projects that, um, we would not be able to, uh, fund in one year. Emergency, um, capital projects that occur during the year, any type of remodeling or repair of the buildings, purchasing capital equipment, um, and, uh, you can, you can see the list there. Um, and so as part of the annual budget process though, we are, would be required to report publicly on the funds that are maintained in the capital stabilization fund and any of our intended uses. I think that's it.
Uh, there's a question from John.
So, if we establish this, if it gets passed by both towns, next year, we're gonna have at least two point eight million dollars in the box. It's one percent, one percent of twenty eight million is two point eight million dollars, isn't it?
So, uh, it would be a decision on how, what strategy to fund this and at what level, um, so.
I, I, I think, unless I'm mistaken, I think what this does, it, it.
Caps it.
Well, unless I'm mistaken, I don't say, all we're potentially doing today is voting on the establishment of a stabil- stabilization.
I understand.
We're not voting to fund it yet.
But.
But this provides us with a vehicle that we can then come together as.
Targeted range is one percent.
But we've been voting into the budget in order to fund it.
I would say the language targeted though is where we aim to be. I think that the committee could come up with, or we could come up with a plan to get to that target range, but I don't think it needs to be done immediately in the following year. And this is, this is the school committee's policy too, so this could always be.
Just seems like a lot of money.
So I will, so the way that number was calculated was that what's recommended, uh, what percentage of the budget is recommended for capital repairs of the, of the budget is about seven percent. So if you think of us.
Per year?
Yeah, so we're, right now, um, if you think of your household expense and your, your operating costs and maintaining your home, it sounds like a lot of money, but it's, it's three hundred and fifty thousand square feet with aging assets.
Yeah, but I don't think I've ever seen Keith come up and say, I need two point eight million dollars.
No.
I think he did.
I can come up with five point.
Yeah, but, but you never came up with two point eight million dollars.
Well, the, the capital, the capital plan, if you look in, in every year, no, absolutely not. But if you think of the things that have been deferred, you do get to that number.
Yes, but that's over multiple years.
Correct.
So you're telling me you can do it all in one year?
Two point eight, that'd be great.
So one point, one percent of.
Two point eight is ten percent.
Correct, two hundred and eighty thousand?
Yeah, it's twenty, twenty eight million.
Oh, fine, then I'm fine, two eighty, that's fine.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I was like.
But seven.
That's fine, two eighty, that's fine.
But when you, again, the, the rec, for, the recommended amount for, you know, funding.
Two eighty's almost exactly what we're asking for anyways. Sorry, I, I apologize, I'm not, apparently I'm not good with math.
No, but the.
That's totally reasonable, but I think we all should be comfortable with that, two eighty seems very reasonable. So that we don't have to go through this other stuff and we can fix the boiler and have heat in the school.
Yeah, and I, I think, you know, in context to, or what, to add to what you were saying, we will have a challenge next year to think about like, funding the fund and doing capital projects at the same time. We're, we're gonna just have to wrestle with that, and how, how do we fund it to get it up to where we want while taking care of some of the needs?
That's a, that's a good point, because part of the discussion, and if it goes in the capital meeting, we are, we're adding the four hundred thousand or so to the assessment, but that is four hundred thousand of two million that we need to do over the next five. So it may be that not for four or five years, or we even in a position to begin funding this for long-term planning, but just getting this established provides us the opportunity to talk about, is, is there a pathway to fund this? May likely not be for some amount of time, but, uh, just getting the vehicle established so that we can use it when, when appropriate. I think, from my, my opinion, I think.
Got it.
And I, I would just also add that, you know, we, this is a relatively new building, but the renovation happened in twenty, uh, two thou, you know, twenty, what?
Two thousand and six.
Two thousand and six, finished in two thousand and six?
Yep.
Um, so we're now, I think the debt will be paid off in June of two thousand.
Twenty seven.
Twenty seven, um, and we have, and we've, I think this, this school committee's strategy has been strategic to let that debt assessment fall off and then start having greater investments in capital projects like roofs, um, heating systems, windows, and so forth.
One other thing, weren't we told years ago, um, by accountants or bonding agencies or something that this was considered a best practice to get the best bond ratings?
Correct, and we did, we did also move this warrant article forward many years ago. Um, and one of the recommendations was to establish a policy to create some goalposts for the regional school committee 'cause the, the law, the, the goalpost that the policy puts forth is, is a lot more restrictive than actual law, so. I will share that the select board in South Borough voted three to two not to support this.
What was the rationale?
I did not stay on to hear that part.
I think they, I think they wanted to see what our funding plan was, how would we fund this? So creating it is one aspect of this, and what is the funding strategy to fund this?
Well, I, I heard they really wanted, they didn't want us to, they wanted us to come ask them for money. They liked that, that's what I heard, sorry.
No, this was at last night's.
When we were presenting to them, when, when we, when we went to the select board, and they were presenting.
Just ask for what you need is.
That's right, they would've said, why, why, why have your own money when you can just ask us?
That was more of a, more or less the argument that torpedoed it the last time, was, um, certain resident, um, made the case, you know, why should current residents be paying into a fund that's not gonna be used for potentially years down the road, and they're never gonna see the benefit, or potentially won't see, you know, things like that. So I, we're gonna need a decent argument for why this should pass, and I, I think it's there, but I mean, it's just a matter of presenting, I mean, I think we were blindsided last time, you know, we just weren't expecting it.
No, I think that the preparation for, uh, communicating the rationale around this article will be really important at town meeting. And I think that, you know, currently, I mean, there's a lot of reasons, but currently we have no emergency reserve fund for any unexpected capital expenses that happen. We're, we're fortunate, but if, you know, if something, something does break, we have no place to go.
So, um, in the event, let's, hopefully this doesn't happen, let's say something happened, that means that we would effectively have to call a special town meeting in both towns. Correct, otherwise we would deplete our operating budget for the significant expense.
Not necessarily.
Yeah, I mean, I think we would have to, we'd have to go back to both communities, we'd have to look at, um, if we were able to use our excess and deficiency. It, the, the solutions would not be ideal currently.
Right.
To your point, Paul, is it, it's not our responsibility to call the town meeting, our responsibility is to assess and how the town addresses the assessment.
Right, they have, what is it, sixty days or ninety days to do something.
And no action is approved.
Right.
But again, sixty days is a long time if you're dealing with it.
Yeah.
No heat, no heat.
Right.
But I think, just repeating what I said in, in a way, um, is, to me, and it, and hopefully it gets approved. If it doesn't, it doesn't change what our responsibility is, ultimately, we, we're gonna provide an assessment to the town for two million dollars over the next five years. And while we're, we're asking for some flexibility as a committee to make sure that the school has the funds it needs to maintain its property, which is the town, municipality's property, so it, it should, I think, it's, it's a fair ask. If it doesn't, it doesn't change, may not give us a tool to reserve funds, but it just means potential assessments in the future would be higher.
And this asset for both communities, the square footage is larger than the combination of, of each community's assets combined. So if we take all of the schools in South Borough, this is greater in square footage in the same in North Borough. So it's, it's a, I think sometimes people forget about the scale of this public.
All the commentary and discussion, any, any other questions or commentary from the committee?
How long-term do you see this being, I mean, gonk flex repairs were so recent, do you see this coming up again in the next few years? Is this more like a decade away, or how, how do you see this playing out in the timeline?
I think if you look, if you, um, kind of examine the capital stabilization plan, there are consistent investments that the district will need to take to maintain this infrastructure. I think, a- again, there are needs, there are roofing needs, there are parking lot needs, there is a lot of maintenance that's required to maintain this, this facility. This would help, um, do some of those smaller, um, repairs that are required.
Continually.
Continually.
Yeah, in terms of timeline, it's always not, because we often push things off year to year.
Any other, any?
Clear.
Clear, okay. With no further discussion, I would like to accept a motion to authorize the North Borough, South Borough Regional School District to establish a capitalization, stabilization fund in accordance with chapter seventy one, section one, section sixteen G, one dash two of the general laws for the purposes of funding capital items as identified in the North Borough, South Borough Regional School District Capital Plan.
So moved.
Moved by Paul, do I hear a second? Seconded by John. Roll call vote beginning with remote participants Joan.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Karen.
Yes.
Kathleen is not in attendance, John?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
And Paul?
Yes.
I also vote yes, that is unanimous for the participant attendance.
Thank you.
Check my agenda items here, and that has me right, I think that moves us to the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five lunch price increase discussion and, uh, potential requests for a made vote.
Turn it over to Keith.
Yes, so included in your packet is a memo that I provided to, uh, Greg and the committee about the reason for the lunch price increase. Uh, this is purely for compliance, um, once universal free meals was provided, uh, to, to the state, through the state, we, the, Desi also provided a memo and some guidance on, on compliance of where the price per meal should be, noting that the free meal is in place, so the first meal that students get i- is free, but the second meal price is the one that we needed to come into compliance with. Uh, and for Algonquin, we are approximately fifty percent, fifty cents below what the recommended, um, rate should be, and about the same sixty cents for, uh, an adult meal. So the, the price increase that we're hoping for the support of the committee to get is for that second meal, to bring it to three eighty five, uh, for each of those second meals, and for the adult meal, uh, bringing it up to, uh, four dollars and seventy cents from, uh, four dollars and ten cents. And what I can say, just as far as context is concerned, when it comes to a second meal on any given day, any given lunch, um, depending on the menu item itself, you could see between twenty and forty students having a second meal on, at any given day. So it's not necessarily gonna be a revenue driver for us, and this is purely a, a compliance request that we're making at this time.
Any questions, commentary from the committee? Hearing none, I'd like to, I'd like to accept the motion to authorize the North Borough, South Borough Regional School District to increase the price of a second student meal from three dollars and twenty five cents to three dollars and eighty five cents. An increase in the adult meal price from four dollars and ten cents to four dollars and seventy cents.
So moved.
Moved by Chris, seconded by John. Roll call vote, uh, remote participants Joan.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Kathleen is not present, John?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
And, um, yes also.
Thank you.
That is unanimous. That moves us to, uh, unless there's any other items in your business, which I think there are none, move to the principal's report, uh, Mr. Bevlin.
Good evening, everyone. Well, thank you for having us. I will actually start off with Kathy's student report, so if you wanted to.
Yeah, sure. So I did just crunch the numbers real quick. According to the Mass Primitive Education, and it seems Algonquin and the town of Northborough average between twenty-one and twenty-three K per student. That's pretty consistent across the Massachusetts state where the average is about twenty K, but Boston's as high as thirty-one K. So we seem in a relatively average place and pretty good comparatively to Westboro, Huffington, and some neighboring towns. Tonight, of course, is where Ms. Howland is at currently is the Jazz Night. But here are some other school events from this past month. So Best Buddies had a movie night in the library and also a bingo night with community members. There was Poetry Out Loud with three winners where one went to the regional competition. Where a sport success includes one senior, Alex Fong, who placed fourth in his weight class for wrestling. Junior Lindsay Brown, who was playing on the U.S. National Field Hockey Team. Girls' basketball made state playoffs. Ski team had four ski, skiers at the state championship. Swim went to the state meets. Gymnastics held the league's best record. Indoor track, which was for the first time in forty years, both boys and girls won the Division One District E Championship. Cheer had two athletic all-stars and one academic all-star across the state. And hockey teams are doing pretty good as well.
May I just add one thing?
Yes.
And the JV girls' basketball team went undefeated. Just for the record.
Wonderful.
Round it up.
Gonk Gathering was hosted by the sophomores, sort of a replacement for the homecoming mist this year due to gonk flex changes. And here was, in the cafeteria, a dance, a bunch of events, board games, and more with a DJ. There were also, for Valentine's Day, two major club-based activities for fundraising, including Souls for Souls, collecting shoes and clothing, and Hugs and Hygiene, where the senior class collected products for the Northborough Southborough group gatherings. For Valentine's Day, there were also singing Valentines, where student performers went to classes and sang for them. And there were also Valentine bundles also sold by the sophomore class with flowers and Hershey kisses and cards going to students as well. For upcoming student news, there is the school play on March fourteenth and fifteenth. There will be a new print harbinger within the next month. And the, uh, elementary schools in Northborough are having students from Algonquin go and read books to the students, which is a great effort across the community. EnviroProjects is a very new ambitious club this year where they have a checks bench collecting plastics. They've been meeting with the state legislators, including Jamie Eldridge and Kate Donahue and Robin, with the pl- bottle and plastic bag bills that are currently at the State House, communicating about their own opinions and also working with the community businesses to help support those bills. They're also working with composting from the Westboro Student Body, where they have a similar process to one that Algonquin's looking at, based on similar funding, um, information. Um, and they're mainly concerned with environmental sustainability at Algonquin. For the survey, so this past month, the Student Advisory Committee put out a survey to the student body regarding AI. And there were about two hundred and forty-eight responses, which is twenty percent of the student body, give or take. And we believe actually according to the Mass Primitive Education, it was about twenty point zero five six percent. So pretty, pretty close to twenty. Uh, we had seven questions, one in demographics, which was just which grade to make sure we had a pretty even spread. And then there were five questions on AI and one with additional thoughts where students could share their own perspective in a paragraph comment. And the questions were created by the AI Working Group, which was reviewed by Mr. Callen in illustration. And many of the questions were designed by teachers, including from the, uh, community, the, sorry, the digital literacy classes and computer science. And the responses were collected in the middle of February, right before February break. So for starting, this is two pieces of data, which is which types of AI have been used in the past. The highest was Google Translate, which we believe is mostly used by students that take foreign language, as well as the English and German students themselves. And then coming in second and third were the predictive text functions, which you can see on Google Docs if you're typing, and it suggests things automatically. Some students choose to turn that off for themselves, but many others choose to use that. Grammarly as well is also popular for spelling and grammar suggestions. ChatGPT is closer to about half of students, and then about thirteen point eight percent of students choose to use other kinds of AI as well. AI for academic purposes showed that most students do not consistently always use AI for academic purposes, although a small percent said that they often or almost always do, which is to be expected, I believe, in this state of how accessible the old technology is. Um, and I know that some students do have technologies such as Grammarly enabled directly on the Google Docs. So every sentence they have, Grammarly is right there. So if not, it's not all potentially chat, ChatGPT being used.
I'm just surprised by the number being so low.
Yeah. Um, for the never, one of the things that you would say about that is the fact that although Google Translate is very, very easy to access, you just search it up on Google and it's right there. The others typically require you to sign up for an account, add your email. And that can also sign you up for getting emails. And a lot of students would not be putting in the time and effort to really be investing time into using that technology when they're already able to write successfully on their own. Um, but we would expect that that number could decrease as more students move up throughout the district over time as technology becomes more popular and progressive. For data on kinds of AIs used, so fifty-four point seven percent said that they use it for providing advice for improving their writing. And that is good because the examples we used for that were more along the lines of spelling and grammar more than others. And only eight point six percent of students answered the next question, which was having AI write their papers for them. So seeing that difference, I think, is important to recognize in the fact that more students are using it as a tool to support their writing, rather than having them write all or almost all of their work. And then forty percent of students use it for inspiration or generating ideas for assignments, which some students, some teachers in the school have been suggesting lately. I know that one teacher I talked to uses it for a particular assignment where students are required to make a movie at home, where they have to explore their use of human geography. And so she lets them use technology such as ChatGPT to help generate ideas, since it can be hard to come up with ideas for entertainment video that really encompass all of their knowledge. And then for worksheet problems as well, that can be things like photo math or ChatGPT, which you can ask questions about math or science, and it'll explain responses to use. That's, uh, I mean, students use that as well. Um, and then for graded versus ungraded assignments, more are using it for graded assignments than ungraded, which would also make sense because there is some amount of use for being able to succeed more academically. And then twenty-three point seven students said they do not use AI at all, which is also interesting to see. In which cases are you most likely to use AI? Uh, so one that we really noticed was wanting to see an assignment that's busy work or uninteresting. I believe forty percent of students say that is when they're most likely to, which also makes sensibility because when students prove that they are really interested and invested in an assignment, they may be more likely to be willing to dedicate a lot of extra time to pursuing it and exploring it based on their own perspective, opinions, and ideas. And then thirty point six percent of students said it's a shortcut that makes things easier as well, which can be seen for longer assignments. But when other activities take up too much time or create time for other assignments, those both being high, I believe it's reflective of the fact that some students do have a very high workload at Algonquin and a lot of things that they do in their free time. And when you're, when you are signed up for a lot of really high teaching classes, there can be a lot of things that can build on each other. And then for how it impacts your academic experience, most said it positively changed, most said it improved their grades, most said they incorporated it as a useful tool. And others said they also have not seen the change in their school experience. The Writing Center is particularly concerned with the ten point six percent of students that said they value peer feedback and writing assistance less based on the ability of ChatGPT and, and AI tools, because I think it shows a decrease in use of resources at school with personal human interaction and more reliance on online websites for support. And so the general conclusions we have in all of this are that there is, um, experience for AI software. So some teachers have been using the Chrome extension titled Revision History, where when you use that, you can see the entire history of a document on Google Docs from start to finish in its creation. And you can also see every time that someone copies and pastes text into it, all of that pops up next to it. And so it can be very easy to tell when students are or are not using artificial intelligence, such as ChatGPT, for some parts of the assignment. And also predictive text, which I explained before, is if you're typing on Google Doc or email text messages, it'll suggest words for you next. That can be disabled across the district with, with a flip of a switch, as Mr. Callen said, that is something also that the school could look into. For curriculum integration, some of the freshman tech courses, such as Exploring Computer Science, do talk about the capabilities typed responsibly use of AI. Others, such as Digital Literacy, have not incorporated that into the curriculum yet. And so we definitely advocate that that should be incorporated into all freshman curriculum with Digital Literacy in order to make sure that students come into Algonquin with a strong understanding of what AI is, but also how it can be used responsibly. And so they don't get trapped using it in an unethical manner. We also note that the handbook policy does include ability to use AI as allowed by teachers, but I'm not sure that a lot of students are aware of that fact. I know that students are required to read the handbook in their freshman year, but I have heard a lot of students will just check a box and not actually put in the work to do that. And so I think that promoting certain policies like that in order to encourage students to work more closely with their teachers, understanding when they need to use something like Grammarly in order to help if they have an intellectual disability, such as dyslexia, where spelling and grammar comes really difficult for them. That could be something to explore and definitely use a, with their teacher on. And then reducing barriers such as homework levels and pressure as well, we believe, would also reduce the amount of AI that is used. And that is all before the teacher professional development day in March on AI. And then some of our solutions also are embracing AI tools, such as the bibliography source generators. For those who don't know, there's, um, ones such as perplexity, where you can implement a, where you can insert a question, and it will give you a list of about ten sources that it believes are related to that question. And so you can see from a lot of different sites very quickly, uh, sources that you can access and which ones you think may or may not be responsible. And also acknowledging AI as useful for some students, including Google Translate for ESL students with translation support or Grammarly for dyslexia, as well as a lot of, there's exquisite AI. So you can use AI very easily to create abilities to study such as study decks for you. And so acknowledging that as well can be important for students, but, um, also expecting them to know that they should not be using it to write their essays for them and having a very responsible and ethical dialogue about differentiating the usage of it. Um, for other things that we are currently looking into, just to wrap this presentation up, we are currently looking into doing a future mental health survey, targeting students above to, um, explain which school-wide strategies for mental health have been the most successful for them. And it's also, um, hoping to help support Mr. Martino's idea of trying to define mental health as a district and creating a way to move forward into the future from there. We're also hoping to bring more student leaders to school communities in the future, such as when the harbinger comes out in the future, or when a department that's very related s- to their organizations, such as if the World Language Department's presenting and these finish honor society, where to join them and explain what they're doing in order to help implement better, uh, communication with students and the school community across the district. We're also looking into adding Narcan training to the CPR unit of health and fitness classes, um, due to the fact that schools such as Framingham near us have implemented that very recently. And we believe it could be a powerful tool to help students understand more about the CPR dialogue. And then, um, also finally hoping to discuss, uh, targeting students before the elections and town meetings in order to encourage them to utilize their civic responsibility if they're eighteen years old and are eligible to vote. So, thank you so much.
Any, any questions? No, not at all. Great job. Any questions or commentary?
The, all the data on AI is fascinating. Unable to predict after that data, I, I would have thought it was higher use, but, um, and I guess that leads me to a question to Mr. Bevins and to, uh, Stephanie. You know, we, I, I did miss a meeting or two, so I don't know if it's been talked about before, so if it has, just push me off. But what, it sounds like there's a professional development day coming up with this. Wha- what is the district's, um, stance or, you know, how are you looking into, um, the, the uses? It, it seems like there's a lot of collaboration in, in such happening. But where, where's the district going with AI?
Who wants to start it?
Yeah.
Do you want me to start?
Sure.
Um, well, I think there's, I think there's a lot to learn and understand. And I think when we say I, AI, we don't all have the same definition. And so one of the first things that's happening is, um, both at a student level, but at a teacher level is learning more about AI. What is AI? Where is it in our lives? There are some grassroots groups of teachers here at the high school who have been meeting and, um, looking at tools together. Um, I work with a group of the UDL explorers for the Universal Design for Learning, and some of those same people are involved in, in some of these grassroots AI groups. And so they will periodically just share things with me, and Julie Doyle has been involved in those conversations. Brian Cowan, who's the ITS, has been involved. So there's that grassroots piece. And then on our professional development day next week, we have, um, Greg is actually leading a session about AI. And then we also have another Greg, um, Greg Kulewic, who is a consultant who we have worked with previously. He's an ed tech consultant, um, he's excellent, and he is also going to be leading, um, two workshops that are related to AI specifically for educators. So, so we're really in a phase of learning about it and thinking about like, this is part of our reality as, as adults and is, um, and, and for our kids. And so I think we, um, that's kind of our stance right now, is we need to learn and embrace it and, and understand it and develop shared understanding of what's out there and the different ways it's being used.
Makes sense. It's moving fast.
It is.
And I would just add that, you know, AI influences all our lives currently, and it's really raising the awareness of how AI, how we're interacting with AI in a, in a daily basis. I think that we look, go back to, you know, the portrait of a graduate, you know, those will endure. You know, how do we communicate? You know, how do we develop students who are critical thinkers? AI is part of that. It's a new tool, and we can't just ignore it. We now need to incorporate it into our teaching. We need to be overt about how we teach how to use these tools. And that's something that we're really framing and thinking about, um, as we move forward with, with student education, but also making sure our teachers are equipped with the knowledge and skills to be able to use these tools and understand how these tools are influencing the world around us and how it will influence the future world for students.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I will also tack on, I don't have much more to add, except that this had, same conversation's happening in literally every high school, probably like in the same period of time on all the email chains. People are trying to figure out, you know, where, where is everybody on this and about where everybody else is, which is the process of identifying what are the, uh, what are the difficulties of it? But what are all the exciting things and how we prepare students to be ethical and responsible, but also, you know, productive in an environment that's going to be highly informed by AI?
Yeah.
Thank you. I think we have a ninety-five percent sorted out.
Yeah, right. We're right there. Well, thank you, Kathy. So, um, I'd like to take a little bit of time to talk about some of our biggest focus areas here at the high school. And, and I have talked about this in the past, and I've talked about it a lot here in the building, um, that, uh, we, like many, many other schools in, uh, in the Commonwealth and in the, the country, um, have seen a, a dip in our attendance coming out of the pandemic. So that bolded, um, statistic up at the top, I, I just pulled off of the DESI's website. Almost one in four Massachusetts students missed eighteen or more days of school in two thousand and twenty-two to two thousand and twenty-three, um, last school year. The number eighteen's important because that's ten percent of the school year, and that's the threshold uh, by which DESI, uh, characterizes a student as chronically absent. And, uh, that number is, um, it's irregardless of whether or not it's excused or unexcused. It just means. It just means they were not there. And so that all, uh I think there's a lot of reasons for that. Uh, some of it is that students, you know, students literally had COVID and missed many days, but a lot more of it, I think, has to do with all the other residual impacts that COVID uh resulted in COVID and students having a hard time coming back to school um in uh and maintaining uh strong attendance. So these are patterns we saw here at the hi- at Algonquin as well. So there at the top bullet, I have our um what I would call our almost our baseline uh uh ten uh chronic absenteeism rate from two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen. Of course, that's before the pandemic. Those numbers, if we went years back before that, uh would probably be around there. That's a pretty stable number, thirteen percent of the student body missing ten percent or more of the days of school. Um, that number, I don't you you can see there's no number for uh two thousand and twenty uh when we were in the pandemic. That data um I don't have a lot of confidence in at um when it cut off in March, mid-March of that year. We were at the high twelve, so that number was pretty close to probably stable at that thirteen number. Then we, when students were returning to school, they were slow to return. So uh you see that number twenty-one point four, and it uh improved a little bit last year. And as of uh my production of this packet, it's at fifteen point eight percent. So some of that is, I think, flat out just regression, students kind of coming back to the mean of what ordinary all about when students um have uh have been doing for time. But also a lot of it is due to as many steps we've been taking here at the high school that I'm gonna I'm just gonna um overview here quickly.
You forgot that, though. Didn't you say that seniors start to miss a lot now? Is that fifteen point eight is likely to go up by the end of the year?
That is true, yeah. So um I anticipate, it's a good point, um up time one. So fifteen point eight percent is um, yeah, that number I I'm guessing will creep up um as seniors, as specifically seniors, attendance slips a little bit. But at this point in the year, halfway through the year, and seniors only comprising one quarter of the percentage of or or one quarter of our students, that's a more stable number than, you know. I don't I don't anticipate it's going to go soaring up. Um, and I my I anticipate that it won't be as high as it was last year.
I I would also, um, those percentage numbers um include excused absence is correct.
They do, yeah.
So um I think that's important for people to know that, like, you know, you're sick, you get a doctor's note, or you're having surgery or something, you know. The state does not care.
They don't, right. Now, and.
It even though it's excused, it it's it's um absent. So um I I think that's just.
I would say every, most absences are probably excused.
No.
What?
No, um, you can be home, second half of a cough and a cold, and it's not excused. If a parent calls, it doesn't mean excuse. I mean, like a.
In my opinion, if the parent calls, it isn't like excused.
Um, so a the the state would say like a doctor's note.
But I'm just saying, it's it's excused.
Yeah.
It's it's acknowledged.
So reported to the school is really how we think about it.
Yeah.
That we're an adult has has coordinated with us to let us know that we're aware the student is not going to be into school today. For our purposes here at school, we would use that information to help the student to make up work. And if if they don't get a call in, we could potentially not allow the student to, you know, make up work.
I think it's just important to distinguish that um the state does not distinguish.
Yes, right.
Between.
I think the state is the state is approaching this with a lens of, for whatever reason, a student is not in class, that it is impacting learning.
Yeah.
So it is, it doesn't look at, you know, why.
Yeah.
It's just saying that many of our students, and I would characterize, I think Sean, you mentioned it, Algonquin is not one of this the districts where uh the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education is concerned about.
Right.
Its absenteeism.
And I do, I'm in the absentee rate also, though, does play into our accountability.
Yes.
Increasingly so.
I think e- even more. Um, so I just want to set context for maybe people watching or others who don't understand the, like you said, if you, a lot of people think if you call, it's excused, but these numbers um uh impact at school accountability rating too.
Yeah.
Um, and these are for daily absences, and I will talk a little bit about uh about classroom absences, which is are are a little bit more granular. So this year, we've done several things simultaneously, or over the course of the year, we've developed several strategies to help incentivize students or or monitor students' attendance and get them here into school. Um, one major piece of that is to improve our communication strategies with families. So uh on Power School, we have some new tools where every parent can see with real granular accuracy what their child's attendance is what it looks like. And that's not just their daily absences, which wouldn't be a real surprise, but it does break it down by class by class and even like the part of the day where they're missing more classes than others. So with a rotating block schedule, something like that could be easy to not observe. And students who, especially students who might be able to drive, let's say, um might show up as present in school because they made it there, and their daily absenteeism would show that they were present, but maybe they didn't make it to their last two classes, and their parents might not be aware of that. And so that's something um that we've improved on. We have a real um a much, much better understanding of students' class by class um behaviors, and we are able to cap catch uh and and address some patterns that just we flat out didn't have uh tools to to identify two years ago and before. So we were always good about reporting daily absences to the state and and monitoring those things, but really the devil is in the details and and making sure students are getting to all their classes, not just reporting to school and being daily present. Uh getting to all their classes is is in fact probably more important than having good daily attendance is having uh excellent class by class attendance. Um, we've started to reach out to students and start to communicate to students that they need to maintain uh good attendance to to maintain their social privileges. So student uh seniors have the ability to leave campus campus, but we want to make sure that they are making it to all their classes and making it back from uh from their senior privileges to keep those privileges. Um, prom is another big driver, a chance to use a student's uh attendance and say to a student, well, if you're planning on going to prom, we really need to see you here at school more often. And I have it there parenthetically, we're not looking here at the school for perfection. Uh, and in fact, I don't know that having perfect attendance is particularly healthy. We don't want to incentivize students who are un- unwell or sick to come here to school and get others sick. Um, but we're looking for improvement on students whose data suggests that uh improvement can be made. So that, so our, my finding is uh in in my previous school is students will respond more quickly and with greater enthusiasm to the uh the privileges that they really buy into than some of the other things like detentions, which are just not particularly powerful in improving attendance. I did already reference that our data is much, much improved, so our data is cleaner. It's easier to access, and it allows us to identify patterns. Let's say when a student is missing double-digit um classes in one class and single-digit in all the rest of their classes, it sticks out. We're able to identify that and look at that um and and address that and find out what's happening with that specific class. And then uh we are locate, we we've applied for some grant funding to uh to develop some summer programming for our students who who are the who are struggling the most. So um I'm kind of articulated all these same things in in a tiered model here that um that I won't uh explain too much of. But uh our tier one students, those are students who generally speaking, things are working pretty well for. I would characterize eighty-five percent of our students as having quite strong attendance and really requiring nothing more than a little bit of cheerleading and and continuing to communicate that the the importance of keeping up those good rates of attendance. Students who whose attendance are is not ideal and maybe could improve, I say about ten percent of our students fit that fit that category. Those students uh we are targeting messaging to, we are using the data that we have, and we're, like I said, uh tying some of our attendance goals to their ability to access social privileges like prom, like the Red Sox game that the seniors are going to, those kind of things. And then tier three is really where we have students who are are uh are missing a great deal of school, and that's impacting their grades in huge ways. Um, so we have the highest level of service for those students, um which includes often family meetings, phone calls to families, and intensive coaching to get them here into school. And we're looking at developing a summer program to have the students here in the summer so that they we don't lose contact with them, so that we build up some of those patterns that are going to be useful for them to um to return to school without trouble in September. So that has been a a big focus area for us. We're monitoring the the data closely. We've made some nominal progress. I I anticipate that progress to kind of remain steady. And then next year, that some of these steps will become more incorporated into students' understanding of the importance of attendance throughout um the rest of their school career. Um, yeah, yeah, John.
So um I would just like to thank you because I think the da- the data is phenomenal.
Oh, great.
When I looked at it, and it's uh it's very helpful and it's very insightful, so.
Oh, thank you.
It's really good.
Yeah, um, I think we have all have room to grow, and sometimes the students who need the most uh, you know, the most attention on the day data, maybe aren't doing it themselves, maybe their parents aren't. And so, you know, it just is going to require a lot of a lot of lifting from all the people who support the the kids who need it the most. So another area that we focused uh heavily on this year has been student engagement. This is an area my staff identified last spring when I asked them what instructional goal would they like to work on together? Um, and it was, they identified that students uh more than they were before the pandemic, or at least in their anecdotal reporting, were arriving to a class, ready to do work, but really um that work often felt transactional and that they they were engaging in ways that were really dependent heavily on extrinsic motivations. Um, we worked uh through the instructional rounds process at Harvard's Graduate School of Education uh with great help uh in lining it up from uh Stephanie Reinhorn, and it was wonderful. I got trained in in doing instructional rounds, and a team from California, a a team of educators that included people from California, Kentucky, and Michigan came to our school and used the rounds process to visit school, uh visit classes, and look at our classrooms through a lens of engagement and to see how engaged students are and could they pick up on some of these subtle um challenges teachers are facing with engaging students in learning without relying entirely on the extrinsic motivations of like just grades or other things that um aren't so gratifying to to drive learning. Um, some of the high-level takeaways they achieved were that our students are pretty compliant. I will say, when you have four people in the room and they're all from a different school and they have Harvard, you know, notebooks in their hands, students sit up a little bit straighter, and they are pretty compliant. That happens when I'm in the room as well. I'm aware of that. Um, and but our students are generally compliant um compliant more than, I think, most uh m- most schools, I would even say. Um, and they participate at the level that's required. So some of the things we talked about was that students will probably bring their game up to to if the level of challenge is increased and that there might be room to grow there. Uh, that teachers are provide unambiguous directions, and students generally follow the direction. So there's a high degree of of kind of ritual compliance and strategic compliance around our building. Um, and that's, I think, reflected in how teachers comment at the way they teach and how students engage their learning. But in the third, the third uh bullet is really, uh, this is the real challenging part, is that students perk up and showed a little bit more engagement when they had some personal connection to the content, uh that the task was was greater in complexity than not. And that, and this is a big one at the bottom, is when they were provided some level of personal choice, which is increasingly um a strategy many of our teachers are employing. Uh, so none, none of these were blockbuster findings. These were pretty consistent with what we um see on a day-to-day basis, but it was interesting to hear twenty other individuals spend one hour in our building, going around seeing all this learning and consolidate their their takeaways. And this is, the these are some of the things that they um that they saw. Um, so now my staff and I are unpacking it and figuring out, now what do we do with this information? And um how do you, how do you um adjust your instruction to make sure kids aren't just doing the learning because it's being asked of them, that it's it's authentically and actively engaging for them? And that's a real challenge. So the two things that we're facing, which is attendance, uh, you know, slippage in attendance and students, you know, coming to school and doing school but not so engaged in school are two things that really are every school, I think, is seeing and 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 struggling with. Um, I know I've talked about this in the past, and I'll talk a little bit about this. It's a bit of a peek behind the curtain. I just wanted to share with you because um some of uh the work we do here on our Monday afternoon staff meetings and department meetings um i- in the last two months have uh much of the work has been around common assessments. You might recall, two years ago, we made a shift to unify the way our teachers uh teach, uh our teachers assess at the mid-year and at the final. Um, so there's a great deal of autonomy in in our school between the way two teachers might teach a class. Um, there's a great deal of autonomy in American public education, uh just generally speaking. But what we ask our teachers to do is even if uh if one teacher and another teacher are teaching a class or coming at it a little bit differently, they're still addressing the same standards. They're still having the same high expectations of students. Um, and so we, they have to do, they have to provide common assessments, uh mid-year exams that are identical, same with the final. And then what we do is we have those teachers work together to identify, you know, how those different strategies may have worked out and which strategies were working well and which were were not. And so using that data to comb through and identify best practices and areas to improve is important. And and um just to be, you know, clear, I I have made sure my staff understands our our teachers are, where students have half year, half days at the mid-year and half days at the final, and that's a lot of time that that students are spending sitting for exams, but also that teachers are are spending creating and grading the exams. So that's a lot of investment our community's made in the calendar to to this effort of mid-year exams and finals. So it's important we use that data to make instructional change. So I'll sh- I'll show you just very briefly uh how our teachers, uh many of them, use a a a sheet like this to unpack their um their results. And so what would happen is if uh John and Sean and I were all teaching the same course, we would go through together and examine, I'm zooming in here a little bit. We would take um take one or two or three really key questions on our exam and agree, can we really hone in on that one or two or three questions? It's going to be really hard on a forty-question exam or a very lengthy essay for us three to make a lot of meaning when we all teach, you know, seventy or eighty students. So instead, what my teachers have done is they'll take uh one or two or three really key anchor questions that they think uh they want to really learn more about. And what what they'll do is um take student initials, and they'll fill them in in these boxes. So on the left-hand side, you put the initials in of the students who are exceeding expectations, the initials in the middle who are students who are kind of middle ground, and the one on the right-hand side would be students who are struggling. And then this is where it's really important is that that my teachers will work together to identify, what do you notice about the group? So which students, you know, generally speaking, are really succeeding and and that John might be having a great deal of success within that Sean might, and are there any patterns that are emerging through this one kind of cross-section of the data? And then this is really the important part, is what does that mean for, what are the implications for um my teaching and learn my teaching in my classroom? So it's not enough to simply identify that, let's say, you know, the males are outperforming the females in our data on questions ten, twelve, and eighteen. It's really important for us to say, why is that happening? And what are the implications for how I'm teaching our female students? Um, and then we ask them, the teachers, to literally go through and say, what are the implications for, what do the students in each of those group areas uh need from me as a teacher? Um, so this, it's very easy to look at our data and just say, it reflects how hard our students are working or how much homework they've completed or how it how much attendance, how good their attendance is. But really, the key is for our teachers to look at the data as a reflection of their hard work and also where they can grow. And then at the bottom, we ask them to identify, what might it look like in my classroom to start to address some of these gaps? Um, so this is just like a rudimentary kind of super-high-level overview of how, you know, three individuals might take one, I don't know, math assignment or or an essay or something and and that we all gave as common assessments across dozens of students, and then make meaning of that so that we can improve and and kind of buy into the into a real um the concept of continuous improvement, which is is something that staff is is working hard on. So that's common assessments that um at this point, our teachers are kind of like buttoned that up and now taking, going forward into the second half of the year and starting to apply some of the concepts they've identified. And in the final, at the end of the year, they'll see if some of these efforts have have improved uh improved things.
Sean.
Yeah.
So that's really great.
Mm-hmm.
Um, question for you, though. Does the parents ever through, ever hear about these? Because it seems to me like when you get a value, when in your job, when you get evaluated, it's always good to hear the feedback.
Oh, yeah, of course.
And so is the intent to actually share any of this? Um, perhaps not all of this.
Yeah, right.
I guess, is there a thought process on this? Because I think the fact that you're doing all this, I wouldn't necessarily know that was happening as a parent.
Hmm.
And if my 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 my, if my child was doing poorly, I might just say, you know, I I I might be frustrated, and I might just, you know, have a negative view of the teacher.
Yeah.
When in fact, all of this is happening behind the scenes.
Hmm.
I think it might be something that you would want to consider, maybe not for this year, but I continue doing it. Think about how you would communicate to the the. Think about how you would communicate to the the all the parents. I mean, you have 1,100 people to communicate to, but I think it would really be helpful in some of your meetings.
I think it's probably the very existence of this kind of work families probably aren't maybe totally aware of. And I think probably students' individualized performance would be, you know, might be reflected in that. Maybe there are students often in column, the far right column, and and parents knowing that we have a mechanism to look at that. Might be news to them. And so I'll have to think about how how we can inform parents about that.
It would also be good for the guidance counselors to have this data so that when approached by a student or a teacher, they can kind of, you know, it kind of gives them the leg up because they may not know the individual student, but it's just something that it's a it's another arrow in the quiver, so to speak.
Yeah, I.
Tool box.
I will say, having had conversations like this in the past, sometimes you'll have a student say that, you know, I just don't connect with that teacher, that teacher doesn't like me. It doesn't happen a lot, but sometimes you'll hear something like that. And it is very helpful to say, well, all teachers give the same, you know, midyear exam and we really look closely at the data. And, you know, if you were a hard quote unquote hard teacher and Sean was an easy teacher, this inoculates us from from some of those kind of insinuations that there's wide varieties. And so we've closed that, you know, we've closed a little bit of the gaps in the variety of of teaching while still maintaining that autonomy that I do think is really valuable for teachers. And we want to, we want to kind of strike that balance and and meet that tension. But that's good.
Matt, Kathy Key has a question.
So my question goes back to attendance.
Okay.
So the kids who kids who are 18, if they're missing a lot of school, are you, I don't know how it works. Are you allowed to call their parents or not?
Yes.
Well, they can text.
Yeah, you can. A student who turns 18, unless they unless they actively tell us and and basically opt their parents out of communications, which doesn't happen, that we we are able to let their families know. I can tell you, having dealt with this and, you know, for 10 years as being a principal, my strategy and the strategy I've encouraged the assistant principals to employ is to let the parents know your child has, your child who's now 18, so maybe not a child anymore, your your young adult has chosen to assert their rights as a person of the majority majority. And and they can do that. They can sign themselves out. However, as parents who maybe pay their cell phone bills or their gas bills in their car, they can assert their parental authority in ways that we can't here at school. So and usually, you know, our kids manage that pretty well. And so we, yes, that's a very long winded answer that says we still communicate with parents unless in a very unusual situation, a student says you cannot. Doesn't happen a lot.
So my other my other comment would be to to communicate to parents that they're really lucky to have a school that communicates with them over this while they're in high school. Because once they hit college, the colleges don't care if you're there or not. You pay the bill, they go to school. You're not telling your parents, say, make this class today. So.
Yeah.
It's a benefit to make sure the kids are actually showing up at school. At high school, they may not like it or whatever, but, you know, come college time, like professionals don't care.
Yeah.
I mean, some do, but no one's done it by your parents.
I disagree.
But it's just not happening.
Yeah.
You know, it's an important thing to tell kids from freshman on that, you know, make the effort today. So it'll it'll be a good habit to go forward with.
And just because a student's 18 and even if they do sign themselves out, we still have agency here at the school to say, it's important that you come to school and attend school if you want to attend, you know, a Friday night basketball game or participate in a sport at the end of the day. Students all are aware that they have to attend school through the end of that day to do those things. And we scale, we are able to and have the ability to scale that up and say, if you want to attend, you know, the following other social event, we need to see some improvement. 18, if you're 18 years old, it doesn't change our ability to to exert some of that school school authority.
Showing up is just a good habit.
It is.
Whether it's school, top, whatever it is, it's just a good habit that that, you know, should be passed on to all the kids.
That's right. Thank you, Ms. Key. And then finally, so we we are undergoing a bit of a evolution of our logo. So and I just wanted to share that with you. This is information we've shared with students and kind of talked through with students. And the Harbinger is doing a story on it. And the 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 way we arrived at this point is that in the laying out of the field for the athletic complex, we came to really struggle, the athletic complex project committee struggled to place the the A on the left hand side, the white one there, which is asymmetrically designed, really doesn't fit neatly on the center logo of the the center of the football field. And it really kind of kicked off a process of just looking at our logo and if it remains a good fit, even new as it is. And so the athletic complex project committee took a look at the logo and engaged. A member of the the committee is familiar with a consulting colleague in one of our major sports franchises. And they revisited our logo and made it a little bit more dynamic and reemphasized or increased the emphasis on our anchor school color, which is maroon. And so the new logo is what you see on the upper right there. And it has already been started to phase in. It will be starting to phase in in ways that you're going to probably observe in the next coming weeks and certainly months. We also, in that process, have developed a unified font that will be identical on our uniforms. It'll start showing up on our wayfinding signage, everywhere you would see, you know, logos and and font be used. Now we have a real uniform color font, a reemphasis on maroon, and so that integration is underway.
May I ask a question? Did we expend money to arrive at the new logo?
We did, a little bit, yeah.
How little?
I wasn't part of that.
$4,000.
Yep.
Question, how many uniforms had we already replaced with the former new logo?
That's a good question. I don't have a, I don't have an exact answer for for you. We anticipate we will have, in the same way we have this scripty kind of what we call the Alabama A is still on lots of our our stuff, that will have been phased out probably much sooner than later. We're still going to be having, you know, different versions of our logo and, you know, as we replace over time. So we're not going back and replacing the uniforms that have the kind of blocky white A on it. We're happy with that. Kids like it. They in fact like the AT a little bit more, in fact, than the the upper A there. So I think we're going to be in this position where you can't really see it on this, I'm sorry. On the right hand side, the that the maroon A has kind of the same exact three dimensionality as the left hand side. So where it's how it's showing up here on the screen doesn't quite look as much of an evolution as it really truly is. And so the reality is we will have, we have some uniforms that even as they were purchased with the the white logo on it, some of them were purchased since that adoption, but actually don't have any of the logo at all. Just as Titans or as where it has the logo very small, maybe on the midpoint, the kind of between the shoulder blades. We have a lot of uniforms like that. So that is, yes, we definitely have, I don't know, maybe two thirds of our uniforms have been started to to earn some process of the reconfiguration. And I think baseball and softball and rugby in the spring of this year and the next month will will have the new A on it. And then we'll phase, continue to phase in whenever we replace uniforms. We'll have this maroon A as the anchor logo and it will be the A on the center of the football field.
And just to comment around what we paid for, I think it's important to note that what we paid for was some graphic design, but also the creation of a of a branding guide that is useful and that will standardize, you know, as Sean mentioned, the fonts, the colors, so that we don't have 15 different teams with 15 different variations of fonts and colors on uniforms. So there will be a standardization. So I think it will serve the community well in the future. And I think Sean, as he mentioned, the catalyst really was trying to center the old A in the center of the new athletic field, and it just wasn't going to work. And we had an opportunity to work with a graphic designer who does work for the Boston Celtics. So what we received is professional level, high quality work.
And I was interviewed by the Harbinger, our school newspaper, and they're doing a story on this will be out very soon. And so they've shown this logo out to students and students are appreciate and and prefer the upper right new logo to the old logo. But they also have a lot of the same questions about, you know, what prompted the change? And these are very healthy and understandable questions, but I think the consensus is in. They said the word 7030 are preferring the new logo to the the retiring logo. And so that's where we are.
Let me know if I'm wrong. When you talk about all the different logos, I believe the boosters, they all now have the same. So as the parents go about and buy stuff for their kids that are outside of the school, quite frankly, they're all supposed to be using the same. So hopefully, that remains consistent. And presumably, the athletic director will be responsible for ensuring that they don't go buy wrong stuff.
Yeah, everything we order from here on out, we, the school, are using that A. But the boosters have it as well in our team storefronts. So teams who create a storefront where they might buy, you know, a sweatshirt or other gear.
A lanyard.
Or a pair or a lanyard and these kind of things, yeah. So that they'll have the the new maroon A, yeah.
Can I just add something? There was also the president of the boosters who basically drove this whole thing. He's the guy who works for the Celtics and got us what I think was an unbelievable deal. Because, you know, this woman was, wasn't she the lead, one of the lead graphic designers for the Celtics? So it's just unbelievable access that we have.
And sorry, so which which logos on the field, the one on the top right?
Upper right.
It's not on there yet, but it will. I don't know when it gets stitched in, but it will be the upper right. I actually anticipate the upper right will be 99% of any logo iteration. The bottom right will be, you know, once in a while, but I think the upper right. Whereas the whites, the two white ones were almost like 50 50 for how they were used in the building. And that concludes my presentation.
There's no further questions or commentary. We can move on to the report on enrollment.
Sure. So in your packet is enrollment report as of January 29, 2004, 2024. Travel back in time. So there's significant variances. Just skipping down through to budget priorities and number six, FY25 budget calendar. Those were discussed in the budget presentation. And Becky will give an update on the monthly general fund expenditure report, the statement of revenue. And Keith will give a athletic complex update.
Okay, so the report that's included in your packet represents expenditures made through the end of January of 2024. As you can see, we have just about $650,000 on the bottom line or 2.48% remaining in FY24. What we are doing now is we are really looking at our encumbrances and we are comparing them as to where we thought we were going to be compared to where we actually are in our fiscal year to date expenditures. So there have been some small tweaks that have been made. A couple of the accounts that were a little bit more significant are our unemployment compensation. We did adjust that down and also our special education transportation. At this point, we have four months remaining in the fiscal year. I can't believe it. And so we are really starting to look to the end of the fiscal year and closing things out. We are running a number of scenarios, looking at next year's E and D balance and where we would anticipate that being at the close of FY24. In terms of the revenue report, overall, January was a fairly routine and quiet month in terms of revenues that were received. The one area that I had previously mentioned was the charter school tuition. If you recall, we did receive an amount that was larger than what we had anticipated from the Department of Revenue. We have received actually $13,000 in addition fund, in additional funds compared to what the cherry sheet said that we were supposed to receive. So we are working with the Department of Revenue and DUCI on this payment and we hope to have that resolved shortly. But overall, like I said, January was a quiet month.
Questions from the committee on either the expenditure or the revenue report?
I'll make a motion.
Make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the monthly general fund expenditure report until audited.
Moved by Chris. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Sean. Roll call vote. Have the more participants, Joan?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. That vote is unanimous. I think that moves us to the update on the athletic complex.
Matt, I think we also want to do a statement of revenue.
All right, okay. Sorry.
Now, I'll make a motion that we accept the January statement of revenue.
Until audited?
Moved by Paul.
Until audited.
Second?
Second by Paul. Roll call vote. No participants, Joan?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. That vote is also unanimous. And I do think that moves us to the next gen of the athletic complex. And we know we have a new logo.
Yes. So to comment on that, the for the athletic complex project, we didn't have a tremendous amount of work happening over the last couple of months, but in the last week or so, things have turned turned up a bit. So I'm happy to report that we now have a press box in place. And now the grandstand is being being finalized and wrapped around, which will eventually include an elevator that will go to to the top. So there are a few pieces that still need to be done. In fact, as Sean and I were walking outside before this meeting, we saw the team kind of wrapping up for the day. So they definitely had a full day of work working on the grandstand. The other things that have been ongoing is the installation of fiber fiber optics going in and going up into the press box as well. So that was work that was done over the vacation. We also are moving forward with the logo. This has been a process that we've been working on for about a month. And I've asked for an update on when it will be installed, which should be occurring within the next 30 days. It does have to wait for the temperature to rise so that things can be properly adhered. So I do anticipate providing the committee with an update on that in for next month on exactly when that will occur. So there are a number of items still outstanding. You know, we are getting to the end of it, which is kind of amazing to think just how much has been accomplished in in the last year. At this point, last year, I think we were voting to go out to go out to bid, right? So it was right around this time. So to think that we've gone from bid to where we have what we have right now is is pretty exciting. So some of the higher end items is at the amphitheater, although all the structure pieces are there. They have not been fully installed, so we are anticipating that that will continue in the next month or so. And we also have some soil to displace throughout the campus that will be part of the work to to wrap things up. And then as we close things out with DW, a lot of gratitude to them and their communication. We have had a great experience with them and it is continuing even in these final stages. So I look forward to providing a more of an update in the next month.
John? Remind me when the snack shack's going to be done?
Oh, thank you. And I didn't mention that. So very also exciting is that Asa Valley Regional Technical High School, their carpentry department will be doing the exterior renovations, starting on the snack shack in mid April. That has been scheduled. They are working currently at the senior center over in Southborough and will be heading to us shortly after they complete the outdoor work there. So the snack shack, the exterior of the snack shack will start its renovations in April. And then the maintenance building, the exterior, that will be done in the fall. Obviously, work isn't done by Asa during the summer months. The other thing worth commenting on is the amenities building. So the McDonald's house that it's been it's been called, we are working with our architect, RGB, on finalizing the plan. They actually just provided us with a final cost estimate this afternoon. We've got to review that and then the next step is to go out to bid on that if that is satisfactory. So we should be seeing some movement on that within the next 30 days as well. So a lot of exciting things happening outside.
I know, Keith, it might be worth noting, I don't know, Greg, if you wanted to mention, we are planning, trying to get one day in the spring sports calendar where we get as many teams together on campus all for one day where we can have a ceremonial kind of grand opening for the facility, even even though by that time we have. even, even though by that time we have been, we'll have been using it and we're, the details of that are coming together, but we're pretty excited about it.
So save the date, May fourth, we'll send out.
Send it May fourth, yeah. I'm sorry?
Saturday.
Saturday, May fourth.
Saturday, May fourth, yeah.
We'll send out a save the date email shortly.
Any other commentary? Questions? If there is none, we can move to the next subject on the agenda, which is the whole business. And again, Keith, I defer to you to discuss an update on the solar presentation.
Sure. Greg, do you want to do some introductory or you want me to? Okay, very good. So included in your packet is, is an update on the proposed solar projects for Algonquin that have been previously presented on. And for this update, we aimed to answer two questions. The first being, what are the long-term financial savings of, of a solar canopy, that being one? And how will the proposed solar canopy fit in with the overall aesthetics of, of the campus? So we did take time to analyze this a little deeper after our prior conversations. And really, it comes down to three, three real pieces that we wanted to focus on. One is when we took a deeper dive, looking at the twenty-five-year PPA agreement and lease agreement for a solar canopy, comparing that to what would be the long-term and, and short-term savings that we would be doing. It's not really advantageous for the district to engage in. A structure of that size really is very expensive to construct, to be, to be very honest. And so after we took that deeper dive, we did discover that it was no longer advantageous to continue exploring that project. And another thing that popped up in the analysis is what happens after the twenty-five years are complete? We would be responsible for whether we were disassembling that structure or going to have to purchase it. And that was something that we had to take, take a deeper look at, which also didn't appear to be very advantageous for us to, to do. And then the last part is thinking a little more closely about the lines of sight around the campus. And as you navigate the campus, having a large canopy on the back parking lot probably wouldn't fit well, especially as we're evolving the athletic campus to this next level. So we wanted to put this, that part of the project on hiatus and certainly look to potentially some other solar options for, for Algonquin when, when it comes to the next step of our, our solar journey here. So just to remind the committee, we do have a, a solar system on top of, of the, of the building that's doing quite well on the roof. And then we want to do a deeper exploration into what other portions of the roof can be added onto that and how we can offset some of the metering that we have that, that, that does occur. So what we are leaning towards as far as a recommendation is to, you know, not enter into a PPA agreement for the canopy, but to do a deeper dive investigation of what additional roof, additional roof system would do for us, both on the financial side and also on the roof side. So at present, Mike Gorman is exploring different types of roof assessments that we can gain. So we get a really clear understanding of the condition of the remaining sections of roof and just how feasible a additional paneling would, would be for us. So that's where we currently stand and that would be the recommendation that we bring forth this evening.
Any questions from the committee on this topic?
I'll just, sorry, Matt, I just made a comment. I appreciate the deeper dive that you guys took into exploring that project. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate the committee pushing us.
Yes.
Way to go, Matt.
You're taking Paul's place very nicely.
Thank you for that. Any other commentary? Hearing none, we can move to the next subject, which is policy development and/or distribution. And I'm seeing there's none at this time, which unless there's any other topics, I would open it again to audience sharing. Then seeing none, I would now move to the subject of personnel update and Greg, can you provide that?
Sure. So as of February twenty-eighth, I'm providing you with, I believe, the shortest personnel report to date this year. We had one appointment and that is Dustin Wilkins to custodian here at Algonquin Regional High School.
All right. Further discussion? Hearing none. Moving to communications and there are none at this time. The subject of approval of bills for payroll, is there anything that needs approval?
No, everything's done electronically.
And that moves us to agenda items for the next meeting. So listed here, we have fiscal year twenty-five budget public hearing. And number two, an update on the world languages department presentation. Does anybody else want to offer any subjects of consideration? House?
I would like to recommend just for the future for this meeting or, or the others, inviting these student clubs or student leaders which are relevant for a department to be able to also share what their work is, working with the department, which would include for world language clubs such as the Latin Club, the French Club, and the Spanish Honor Society.
Actually, I thought that was a good idea myself when you, when you mentioned, I think we can defer to the chairs themselves as to how they want to engage with the different groups that they, they work with. I thought that was a nice suggestion.
I would like to suggest that Jazz Night be, not be held on a school committee evening.
Double duty.
Because that was the best, that was just ripping. That was really good. It's always my favorite, so I'm sorry.
My proposals will actually hold our school committee meeting in auditorium.
All right, it was swinging.
I wonder if we should have like, I'm thinking about that budget, I mean, the article, town meeting for the capital.
We can, we can have a draft presentation to present and run through. We also will have the update of the professional development day. And Becky.
No, I was saying we have the shell of a presentation from two years ago. I think we had started.
Throw that one out.
We'll, 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 we'll spruce it up.
Any other subjects of consideration?
We'll use that chat GPT this time.
Hearing none, I think, so then do I request a motion to, uh, Darren?
I'll move.
Paul, move. Second, John. Should also be a roll call vote to my remote participants. Joan?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Kathleen?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
And also a yes, and that, with that, we are adjourned at eight fifty PM.